It is six o'clock. I'd like to welcome everybody to our May Board of Commissioners meeting. Thank you all for being here tonight. I've asked Mr. Charlie Vickers if he would open us up with an invocation.
Let's pray, please. Our heaven Father, thank you so much for this evening and for this opportunity to be here and to conduct the work of people. And Father, we just pray for each person that is here tonight, for those who serve, for those who are being served. We just pray that you will bless everything that is said and done here tonight. That will all be according to thy will. We just pray that you will go with us and keep everybody safe. And we just thank you so much for all that you do for us each and every day, in Christ's name.
Item number four is on amendments to the agenda. Just after we posted the agenda, we did have one item come up that was on a strict deadline, and that's an action item C. Tate Mountain Corporation, it's a grant for a dam, D-A-M. So, the way it was worded in the agenda language was the dam grant. So, I figured I'd need to make sure it's a dam grant for something that was water back is the purpose there. That's the only amendment that I have in what we've got going. Lisa, do we have any others that you're aware of?
No, that's the only one.
Okay. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda to include this item?
Sure.
Settle.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So, we'll add that under item C for the action items. Employee recognitions. I know we've got one that's not here with us tonight, but Ms. Dean, would you go over and?
I will. We have, we have Mr. Bobby Dean, ten years of service in the fire department. And we really have some great employees, and we appreciate those long-term employees. So, we will make sure that Bobby can see us at the next meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then, under employee recognitions and other recognitions, I believe, Major, you're getting, you have one with the, or two with the sheriff's office.
I do. And first off, I want to thank y'all for allowing us to have this forum and present these awards. Unfortunately, Sheriff Craig couldn't be here tonight. He anticipated something came up, and instead of delaying it, he asked that we would go ahead and continue. And I'm happy to stand here to try to recognize two of our employees tonight. It's time for us to get two of the command staff to come up, Major Pageant, Major Scurry, and also Lieutenant Walter. And Lieutenant Walter is actually over the ADC that this actually impacts tonight. And I'll read a letter that the sheriff prepared to let you insight on why these two officers are receiving this award tonight. I'd like to take the time to explain one detention officer, Nick Sutherland, and also Deputy Eric Morris are deserving our agency's second highest award. If y'all would, come on up, please. You'll, one over here, one over here, please. Okay. Okay. On September 13th of 2000, at approximately 8:59 hours, detention officer Sutherland observed an inmate walk up the stairs in our ADC with a sheet tied around his neck. Once he reached the second floor, he was attempting to tie the sheet on the railing when he radioed the floor personnel, which would be Deputy Morris, of attempted suicide in the pod. When Deputy Morris responded to the housing unit, the inmate had already tied to the railing and then jumped off a second-floor balcony. His immediate action by physically restraining the inmate and picking him up, relieving pressure on the neck, probably saved his life. Actually, Deputy Morris held the inmate up until the sheet could be cut, and the inmate was later transported to Piedmont Mountainside, where he did survive his injuries. It was only due to the watchful eye of detention officer Sutherland and the immediate action of Deputy Morris, this inmate is alive today. And we're sworn protect inmates while they're in our custody. For the above-mentioned reasons, I'd like to honor detention officer Nick Sutherland and Deputy Eric Morris with the Medal of Merit, our second highest.
willing to step in and say why. That's incredible. We really, truly, truly appreciate it. This week being the final week of school, which I know several I can see in the room are probably really excited, and graduation being tomorrow night, we're honored to, one, be able to recognize one group. But before we recognize them, we've also had several others compete recently since the agenda was already in place. We had a state champion in track and field. Mr. Seth White was the winner of state just recently. The PHS golf team, both the boys and girls competed in the state competition just recently. So, I think that they're doing just an outstanding job. But one group that we do want to recognize tonight, and to continue a tradition of recognizing and giving some awards, would be the Pride of Pickens Band. So, Mr. Oub, if you would, call up your students there. We'll recognize them.
Thank you, Commissioner. I really appreciate the time we have tonight to do this. Every year at Bandbait, we give four awards, and it's most outstanding freshman, sophomore, junior, and senior, and they're almost in order. Levi, you switch with them. And the Board of Commissioners has sponsored this award for the past three or four years, and we are very grateful for this. We have freshman Jerry Knight, sophomore Levi Kuiper, junior Owen Galligan, and senior Paige Klein. These were selected from the entire band program for a variety of reasons. They're kind, they're helpful, they do what's supposed to be done, they practice. They're very high-performing players on their instruments, and they're just good people. And so, every year, we select these, we select one from each grade, and these were this year's winners. And like I said, we're very grateful to the board and Ms. Lisa for all your help with this and letting us recognize these very, very outstanding students. So, thank you.
I think the test is, if they really deserve, just can you tell me about if you're earlier on? All right. So, if you were here for the recognitions and as a student, we'd love to have you participate and remain for sure. But we're going to move on to other business. So, if you do want to sneak out, we would understand, especially if you're getting ready to graduate. I think that's probably why I'm watching for the graduation. So, good to wait. My master's saving it for the end. So, we'll move on with going through the rest of our agenda. I know we're under item six, we have the consent agenda. There are no items under the consent agenda. Item seven, old business. Lisa, are you familiar with any of that?
No.
Okay. Either of you have any old business that you see?
No.
All right. Then we'll move on into new business. Item eight, under new business, is the UGA Extension Contract Salary Verification Form. It's a memorandum of understanding. This is for the extension agent for Pickens County. They've had that position frozen for some period of time. They've been covered with the Dawson County Extension in the last several months. We do have the MOU present. I know that you guys have each got a copy of that in your pocket. Did you have a question that you wanted to? I was double-checking. Okay. He's here. So, we've got Clark here, which we can, we can get you. I don't know if you guys have any questions. There is a matching portion of the salary that the county is responsible for. It's contained within our budget for the year. We do have that under, under a line item that already has that present. You can see the first page that we have is to authorize the payment of that salary with all benefits totaling $22,023. And then, the memorandum of understanding is present. I'm trying to see without going through every single page, unless you feel like you need to read the entire. Clark, do you have anything that you would like to present on that before we?
Yeah. So, it's a tad confusing. And normally, when we're coming to ask for what's what we call the request for salary verification, we're not, we're usually not doing it at a time where we're also asking for the contractors, the annual contract. So, the numbers that are in the salary verification, this is not necessarily contract. This is just sort of a good faith agreement. Hey, the funding agency, the county, you know, we would like to move forward with paying this. And so, this just gives authorization once this is signed. I bring back the UGA, and they say, okay, we're going to go through on our end of the hiring process. You know, the numbers that are here are in this annual contract. So, most of this, most of the money in here is for the extension agent. There's a small portion for the program assistant who works at 4H2. And so, this extension agent will cover 4H and agricultural and natural resources responsibilities. And so, having those, and then, it's just, you know, the UGA has made some additions to their memorandum of understanding. There's some stuff in there they've recently added about, you know, this sort of updated, like cannot discriminate on gender and genetic information, all types of stuff. There's, you know, I'm sure you guys dealt with updates in that recently as well. So, yeah. Entertaining any questions you have?
Either of you have questions before we move forward on that?
No.
So, should we do this as two separate motions? One for the verification of county salary, and then the second for the MOU?
The school district is also participating, because there's one on their bills.
Yes. Yeah. So, the, yeah, the same documents are going through. I guess they're meeting in gym.
Since we have two separate items that are, that are present there, I believe, in moving forward with two separate motions. First, on the request for verification of the county salary, if I can have a move?
Move.
Second. Any further discussion on that? All in favor? And so, the second would be to sign an additional memorandum of understanding with the University of Georgia Department of Extension. Have a move to move forward with that?
Move.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
And, sorry, Mr. Chairman, I guess you'd have to do one also for the contract unless it requires one, but I think it will, because it does require signatures.
See, the contract was in the MOU, if I'm not mistaken correct, or is there a second contract document? Okay. And the contract with the salary on the verification of the county salary? Okay. Yeah. I see where you're talking about on the third form now. So, entertain a motion to authorize me to sign the contract in agreement with you?
It's all over now. It's tough down here.
That on the MOU?
Yeah.
Yeah. That one's the one we just moved. So, we'll pass it original down and get that one signed.
Yeah. I'd like to motion.
Make a motion.
To authorize you to sign.
Okay. And a second.
Sure.
Any further discussion on that?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'm missing that page a moment. So, when you said that, but I haven't all three of our signature places. I was looking, but I found it in the end. So, I apologize. The next is on a property, Land Lot 188 in the 12th District, as referred to in the agenda as Allen Young Property. This is in reference to a piece of property in 2018. The EPD required a pump to be placed as a monitoring station there in Jones Mountain, where the old landfill area was. All the paperwork was done. The survey was completed. Everything was moved forward. We just didn't finish the purchase of the property. I want to let Mr. Ainger explain further details.
We talked with Mr. Young, and we've got all the terms set up as he's described in that memorandum. And if y'all will vote to authorize the chairman to execute documents, I'll have rest executed tonight, and then Allen's coming in the office Monday. How about that?
It's for a parcel of property that was point, two acres or four acres.
And across on that was 10,000. Is that correct?
10,000. And then, so with all fees, it came out to $10,001.74 was the total amount to be executed. And doesn't have the exact size of the piece of property. Essentially, we already have the, yeah, point, maybe it's .29 acres. Yeah, let's talk about this. But it's .29 acres. We do have the pump that's already in place on the, on the piece of property. It was a requirement from the EPD to give that. So, y'all have any further questions to fill before we go forward? Have a motion to authorize the signature of the documents to make that purchase.
Sure.
Any further discussion?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
The names. All right. Next item on the agenda is our finance report. Ms. Page?
Okay. Thank you. The report that I have in front of you tonight is the report that ends April 30th, 2021, and that is four months of our school year. So, the expenditure budget should be at 33% or lower. First of all, look at the revenue. The total revenues through April 30th collected were $5,887,881, and that is 20.2% of the total budgeted revenue. And then, we'll now go to the expenditure side. On the general government functions, the expenditures were $1,133,330, and that's 28.06% of those budgets. For the judicial functions, $1,079,332, and that's 27.42% of those budgets. For the public safety budgets, the expenditures were $4,503,063, and that's 30.27% of those budgets. And now, we'll go to the public works, and that total expenditure is $1,038,762, and that's 26.86%. For the Health Department Senior Center and the MATS Program, $34,0910, that's 12.17% of those budgets. For Culture and Recreation, $339,926, and that's 30.06% of those budgets. For Housing and Development Functions, the expenditures are $231,657, and that's 25.96%. So, the total general fund expenditures through the end of April are $8,360,981, and that's 28.8%. For the Enterprise Funds, for the Water Department, expenditures were $703,742, and that's 25.25%. For the Airport, $193,197, and that's 32.07%. The line item budget reports were distributed to the department heads and elected officials on May 14th, and I have copies of all those if you would like to look at them. Do you have any questions on the, maybe if there are just? I don't feel like to ask for approval on some budgeted numbers. It's budget, it's revenue that we received that was not budgeted. The total general fund revenue is, that was not budgeted, is $118,749. The expenditure budgets will increase by that same amount with 67,787, of that being the end of the contingency line. Majority of that was for revenue that we received in March of 2021 from ACCG. On their, it was a special cash distribution from the ACCG Workers Compensation Program from 2019 and 2020. We did not receive that info, that revenue or information that it was even, that we were getting it until, until we actually did get it in 2021. So, we couldn't recognize it in 2020.
What is the 2500 donation? What department?
That's our department. That was, I believe it was from, it was from one of their vendors. I'm sorry. I don't know which vendor. But that, it was a $2500 donation, and the $18,462 for the animal shelter, $17,000, almost $18,000 of that was donated from a person who passed away through their estate to the animal shelter. So, that's going on to a capital outlay line for the animal shelter. And on the next page is an amendment that I'm asking for the water fund, and it is the $85,000, the contribution from the city of Jasper for that water line extension, 136. And that was an intergovernmental agreement that was done after the first of this year.
It's written in both places?
It just increases the revenue budget and the expenditure budget by the same amount.
Any questions?
Next.
Have a motion to approve the amendments to the budget.
Move.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Page. So, the next item's the RFP process for future audits. I do want to read a statement just so that we can reflect it clearly in the minutes whenever we go through. So, I'm just going to go ahead and read the statement as it relates to the process for future audits. With regard to our auditor, our local act states the Board of Commissioners shall honor before the final day of the month following the end of each fiscal year employee certified public accountant for the making of an annual continuous audit of county finances and financial records. This year, our auditor was not hired until after January 30th. However, each year going forward, we will hire the auditor for the, for the coming year in January Board of Commissioner meetings. Our local act also states that the same person or firm shall not perform such audit for more than four consecutive annual periods. Bates Carter is our current auditor, and they have been our auditor for more than four years. They were originally hired on a four-year contract for fiscal years 2013 through 2016, and again, hired each of the following years through engagement letters only. In the future, the Board of Commissioners will sign resolutions for each of the following January meetings to hire the county auditor. We're going to issue RFPs for next year's auditor in the coming months, and in the July work session, we'll be able to discuss that process to go through and prepare that. So, I'm going to have this go in the minutes as reflected by Ms. Lisa, and just to get that documented in there as well. Onto our action items. I do believe we've got all of our minutes for our regular meeting on April the 15th, May the 6th, and both the work session and a call meeting on May the 6th. And we, those were sent out earlier, and hopefully, you guys have had a chance to look through those. If so, if I could have a move to approve our minutes?
Sure.
Any further discussion on those?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next item is looking at a Roper Park Master Plan, Loos Design Company. This is an item that if you look at the total at the end, it doesn't really meet the threshold of a financial decision from the full board. However, it's a large item in terms of the potential scope that would grow. So, I felt like it was better that we go ahead and present it here at the board. We have had a meeting with Loos Design. In your package, it kind of has their proposal for the scope of the work and the project understanding of where they would take a look at Roper Park, help to prepare a master plan and the drawings and renderings and everything that should go. The total cost for the items that are included within this scope is $29,500 to go through and to build that. This is the same architect firm that did Veterans Park in Cherokee County, where they have a pretty, pretty nice, nice setup and layout that's there. The reason for kind of bringing it, if you look on the final page, it shows some additional fees. If at the completion of getting that master plan drafted and drawn up, we decide we want to continue to move forward with, with additional work, then the scope could actually grow. We would be able to present that back and forth with the board. I just wanted each of you to have a chance. But if you so approve, then we can go ahead and sign an agreement to get them started on that process.
Move.
Motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So, in that same context, we have met with and discussed with the Parks and Rec Board on a steering committee that can work with this architect firm as it goes through to kind of help guide. The chairman of the Parks and Rec Board did make the name of three people, which I don't believe I've actually brought in here. It was three members of the current Parks and Rec Board, and I don't have it. It's sitting on the printer, actually. But we have three from the Parks and Rec Board. We had two citizens at large that were discussed, Mr. Matt Dunn and Ms. Carrie Cool. They both have kids that are active and involved and work with the park project. And then, one of us, as a commissioner, I'll be happy to fill that role. However, if one of you would prefer to be a part of that steering committee in my place to be actively involved in that, I'm more than welcome to, to step aside and allow that. I just, for the interest of time, am willing to. However, I don't want to overstep on that. But do either of you have an interest in participating, or would you like for me to, to fill that role, to work with the steering committee?
I think it would, don't you?
Huh? If you want to, if you want to participate and work with them, I think that's a good start. All right. So, we'll have you participate and work with that board, and that way you can get that ball rolling and get it going. Thank you. So, next item is the, where we added from the amendment tonight, and it's the Tate Mountain Corporation, D-A-M, dam grant, as we mentioned before. What this is actually, the Tate Mountain Corporation has, has located a grant. It's a state grant to be able to come in and work with the EPD to study their high hazard potential for the dam at Lake Sequoia. In the process of working through the grant application, they discovered that they needed a sponsor with the local governing authority to work with them, and the sponsor would then participate in submitting the application. Any match that is there, the Tate Mountain Corporation would be financially responsible for any financial match that went. They would prepare all the scope of work, budget request, project management, and a match commitment letter that they would provide, as long as, and well as, the environmental and historical preservation checklist. As the sponsor, our responsibility would be to complete the OMB form, which is really just signing a form indicating, providing a fiscal contact to work with them on the grant process, and to provide them with their hazard mitigation plan. Essentially, just to be a sponsor so that they can seek the funds to be able to have their grant looked at, or their dam looked at. Do I have a move to authorize signing that agreement with them?
Move.
Any further discussion on that?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll move on to our rezones. We do have a handful of them, but they're, they're not as complex as sometimes. So, we'll go through those individually. The first on the list is rezone number as sometimes, so we go through those individually. The first on the list is rezone number 190073, Mr. Mark Rowland. It's parcel number 032054002 on Jerusalem Church Road. The request is to move it from HB to, yeah, from highway business to rural residential on a 40.47 acre tract located in Jerusalem. The presentation was made before the planning and development board on April the 12th to request it. After reviewing the application and received staff reports to be approved, the Dickens County Planning Commission voted for yes, zero no to approve the rezone request on this 40.47 acre tract. Do I have a move to accept the recommendation from the planning commission on approval for this rezone request?
I have a question for Justin. Is this for subdivision?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
How many houses do you know?
I think there were large lot, I don't think there's anything over, I don't think there's anything under three acres, actually. It's only bigger than that. However, if I could make one point to the chairman.
The 10 lots subdivision, I don't know if they, yeah, it said that it was 10 lots that they were looking to do.
The tract, the parcel is 40 acres, but they're only requesting to rezone 37 of that. They want to leave three of the highway business acres up front.
Okay, I understand.
I don't know if that's in there.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The second is a request for change in land use classification for parcel number 062B001005 located at 199 Tabitha Drive. The planning and development office received a completed application in February the 24th from Ms. Selena Jumper requesting a change in the land use classification agricultural to rural residential on a 7.31 acre tract located at 199 Tabitha Drive. Intended purpose of the rezone request, if approved, is to rezone the property and sell a portion to her neighbor and it be like zoning with similar zoning. The public hearing was held on April the 12th regarding the application in the commissioners' meeting room. After reviewing the application and receiving the staff report to be approved, the Dickens County Planning Commission voted for yes, zero no to approve the rezone request at that time. I have a move to accept their recommendation on this particular request.
How much was stuck in that?
I'm sorry?
How much was it that was stuck out of that?
The size is 7.31 acres, and they were looking to sell one portion to enable, what was there? So move?
Second.
And the second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The third is a request for change in land use classification for parcel number 033-070 at 8440 Highway 53 West in Jasper. The planning and development office received a completed application on March 8th from Todd and Christie Stewart requesting a change in the land use classification of rural residential to small agricultural on a one acre tract located at 8440 Highway 53 West. Intended purpose of the rezone request is to combine with another lot that is being rezoned to small ag and build a single family residence, but also to be able to raise cattle. Public hearing was held on May the 10th regarding the application, and after reviewing the application and receiving the staff report to be approved, with the condition that the lots would be combined to make a minimum acreage requirement for small agricultural zoning, the Dickens County Planning Commission voted five yes and zero no to approve the rezone request. So they did approve it with the condition that the lots be combined to meet the minimum requirements that are there. Do I have a move to accept their recommendation to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So the next is from the same individuals for the other piece of property. It is request for change in land use classification for parcel 033-071-002 on Highway 53 West in Jasper. Same date, Todd and Christie Stewart requested a change in the land use classification of agricultural to small agricultural on a 4.19 acre tract located at Highway 53 West in Jasper. Intended purpose of the rezone request was to combine with another landlot to be rezoned into small ag and build a single family residence and to raise cattle. Public hearing was conducted after reviewing the application and receiving the staff report to be approved, with the condition that the lots be combined. Planning Commission voted five yes, zero no to approve the request. Do I have a move to approve their?
Second.
And the second, any further discussion?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next of our rezone request is from Mr. Charles Cathy Chastain, the request for change in land classification for parcel 018-023-005 at Highway 136 Connector in Talkinrock, Georgia. They received a completed application in the planning and development office on March 25th from Charles Cathy Chastain requesting a change in the land use classification of rural residential to agricultural on a three acre tract located at Highway 136 Connector. Talkinrock, the intended purpose of the rezone request, if approved, was to combine with another lot that is being rezoned to agricultural and to sell as one large parcel. Public hearing was held on May the 10th regarding the application. After reviewing the application and receiving the staff report to be approved, with the condition that the lots would be combined to make the minimum acreage requirements, the Dickens County Planning Commission voted five yes, zero no to approve the rezone request. Do I have a move to accept their recommendation on this one as well?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so our final rezone request is the property right next to that, which is the other that they're looking to combine. It's the parcel 018023-003. It's at 186 Highway 136 Connector. It's from Henry and Bridget Cook. They're requesting a change in the land use classification for rural residential agricultural on a 4.88 acre tract located at 136 Connector in Talkinrock, Georgia. Intended purpose was to combine with another lot being rezoned to agricultural and to sell as one large parcel. Public hearing was conducted on May the 10th, same conditions that it would be approved. After reviewing the application and receiving staff report approved, with the condition that the lots would be combined to make the minimum acreage requirements for agricultural zoning, they voted five yes and zero no to approve the rezone request. So I have a move to accept their recommendation on this as well.
Second.
All right, move the second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so each has its own free. This moves us to any guest comments that are here. I know that we've had some issues with the video on there. I think it's back up. So if you are on Zoom and you do have a question, you can kind of hit the little hand wave button or actually wave your hand. We'll do that if anybody here has any comments that you would like to. Any hand wave? All right, so with no comments, I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session. The purpose of going into executive session for tonight would be to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment, or compensation, hiring, disciplinary action or dismissal, or periodic evaluation of rating a public officer or employee, or to interview candidates for an executive position, to discuss or vote to authorize negotiations to purchase, dispose of, or lease property, authorize ordering an appraisal related to the acquisition or disposal of real estate, enter into a contract to purchase, dispose of, or lease property subject to the approval in a subsequent public vote, or enter into an option to purchase, dispose, or lease real estate subject to approval in a subsequent public vote. Also to conduct, or to consult and meet with legal counsel pursuant pertaining to pending or potential litigation settlement claims, administrative proceedings, or other judicial actions brought or to be brought by or against the county or an officer or employee, or in which the officer or employee may be directly involved. Do I have a move to go into executive session?
Move.
Second.
Second.